Our first item is the approval of today's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion by Dr. Rinder, second by Mr. Chesnut. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. First reading of ordinance 2020-57.
First reading of ordinance 2020-57. Approval of the execution and delivery by the City of Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, of a ground lease between the city as lessor and Ninth Avenue owner LLC as the C with respect to historic buildings located at 505, 507, 509, Ninth Avenue in the City of Myrtle Together with a sublease between Ninth Avenue owner LLC as lessor and the City of Myrtle Beach as the C with respect to historic buildings and other matters relating thereto.
Okay, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, and just for clarification, my presentation will really pretty much come with both items, but I wanted to start by talking about why we're here today and why I asked you for this special meeting. I realize it's unusual. I would not have done so except that there is a lot of money that's on the line. In the springtime, you recall, we had a lot of discussion about where we were with the downtown projects. One of the things that I asked back in the springtime was, I asked council's permission to go out for bids for the Nine Avenue North renovation. At that time, I promised to you all that I was not, that we would not accept the bids until I presented a financing plan, because that's been kind of consistent with what we've been trying to do with each of the projects here. Grand definition and put the RFP together, and we received bids in early August for the project. As we, Mashburn was the low bidder for that project, the Mashburn Company. The bids were very favorable, and it reflects the fact that Mashburn had a vested interest in the project. They obviously own the office building, they are partners in the brewery project, so they were motivated to give us a good price. And the price that they gave us, which is in round terms a million eight hundred seventy-two thousand dollars for the renovation of the six properties, was about a half million dollars lower than the next low bid and substantially lower than the bids, the other bids that we received for the project. Also in August, Robert Lewis came in from, Robert, as should be called, is one of the consultants from the Lewis and Rogers Law firm on historic tax credits. Three of the six buildings that are, were included in the renovation are historic buildings and qualified for historic tax credits. And we'll talk about just kind of the process for that in a few minutes. But since that time, staff has been working, Michelle and her staff, have been working with our council, particularly our outside bond council, to come up with the structure to make this work, and also Rogers and Lewis Law firm. It turns out that I don't believe that this has been done in South Carolina before. Obviously, our bond attorneys were, are very knowledgeable about these sorts of things. I think this is the first one they worked on. And even though Rogers and Lewis works with historic tax credits frequently, I think this is the first time that they applied, applied what's a fairly easy process if you're a tax exempt organization, I mean taxable organization to the tax exempt situation. But Robert came in back in August and sort of showed you the complicated structure, but we've worked since then on trying to make that concept and turn it into a reality. Last Tuesday, of course, I wasn't able to be with you, but we presented that structure to you, and my understanding is that you weren't quite, you weren't comfortable with it, you were quite ready to do it, and that you were given assurance at that time from, from our staff and from attorney, from our attorneys, that a delay would hurt everything. And that was absolutely true at that time. On Wednesday, however, came back into the office, and the mayor came in in the morning and told me that she had received a phone call from the vice president from the construction company. And when she was telling me that, at the very same, almost at the exact same time, that vice president called me while she was in the office, and so we both talked to him. And his position was that they had already extended the bid once, which they didn't have to do, and that they could not afford to extend it again. That was a million eight hundred seventy-two thousand dollar bid, and that the price from the contractors was going to have to go up, they wouldn't be able to extend it beyond its expiration date, which actually was yesterday. So we talked in terms of what we could do and what we didn't, what we couldn't do in terms of to make that happen. They agreed as, as you know, because I think I copied you on email yesterday, to give us an extension on that deadline to accept the bid until Monday. So what I'd like to do today, if possible, is I'd like to go over the plan to finance renovations for Nine Avenue, the six buildings there. But if you're not comfortable with either or both of the items, that's fine, they can be continued. What I have to come away with today, though, is direction on whether to accept the bids or not. At the end of the day, that's what I have to have in order to know whether I can, we can accept those bids and move forward. If you give me the okay, I'll sign, I'll sign to accept the bids and we'll move on down the road. If not, that's fine too, if you're not comfortable with doing that. The consequences of that are, we've already been told the bid, the price would go up, I have no idea how much. Now that would require a known in advance what, how much they're going to make up. They are aware that their, their low bid was half a million dollars less than the next lowest bid and the prices for the ne, the other bidders would have gone up as well. So right now, I'm using the proxy of that half million dollars, which is the difference between the low bid and the next low bid as an estimate, but in truth, I have no idea. It may be a hundred thousand dollars, it may be seven hundred thousand dollars. And I, I won't know, wouldn't know until we receive those bids again. But that's what really today is about, is you're deciding whether or not you're comfortable now for me to go forward to accept those bids. Again, if you're not comfortable with the two items that are on the agenda today, that's fine, they can be continued without any harm. But what we can't do is, we, we know now that we cannot extend those bids any further. So that's why, that's why we're here today, that's why I asked for the special meeting. And again, the mayor and I did not talk to this gentleman from Mashburn Construction until Wednesday after the meeting. So I, I hope, Mayor.
Mr. Peterson, would you just explain for everyone why Mashburn cannot extend the bid any longer, what their reasoning is that way?
Well, one, they extended it already, and they gave us a very favorable price, again, because they are extremely motivated to make sure the project's done well, because it's critical to their first. They are both, as I said earlier, they've got the Mashburn Building, the one that they have purchased from the city. They also have, are doing the construction on the brewery, and I believe that either the company or the principals have some interest in that, that project as well. But they're at the point where their subs, they can't, subs aren't willing to hold the price. And so they know in advance that they're going to have to pay more. They are willing to do this in a, and the price that they offered us, I think, was an extremely attractive price, but they just simply can't hold that because their subs can't hold it. So that's kind of where we are today, and that's why I asked you for this meeting this morning. I hope you understand, I know it's unusual, but that's how we got to where we are today. If I could, what I'd like to do is to go over the presentation that's actually part of, it's on the, in your packet at the end of resolution, the packet for Resolution That explains the, the plan that we've put forward to you to finance this project. If you have any questions as we go through this, please stop. I'll wait. Are you all there? Starting out with how tax credits work, obviously, both the federal and the state governments recognize the avantage of incentive visum with rehabilitation of certain properties. And we're going to talk mostly about historic tax credits, but there are really two different types of historic tax credits, and there's a credit on top of that as well. There are those federal historic tax credits and state historic tax credits. They function pretty much the same way, but there's, I believe, a five-year period for the federal tax credits burn off and a three-year period for the state tax credits to burn off. In addition to that, the state of South Carolina makes an abandoned building credit. Basically, it's an incentive for redeveloping a building that's been essentially abandoned or vacant, at least sixty-seven percent abandoned or vacant for five years to work. There's also a credit for renovating that, and that was regardless of whether the building is historically significant or not. So really, you're talking about three different, three different credits. In each case, as you can see, what really happens is that there is an investor that comes in, and oftentimes, it's the same person, but potentially three different investors. And they come in and they purchase these tax credits. These are generally high worth, high net worth individuals or corporations that have significant tax liability. And they will buy, in the ca, in this case, a federal tax credit for about seventy, seventy cents on the dollar. So in other words, if they have a million dollar tax liability that they know that they face, they're willing to pay seven hundred dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars to get that credit that then pays a million dollars worth of taxes. That seven hundred thousand dollars that they pay to purchase that credit becomes an infusion of capital into the project. So the only thing that the tax investors care about is getting that credit. They have nothing to do whatsoever with the project itself. Most of them will never lay eyes on the project. As I said earlier, the credits are absolutely stacked. So automatically, if a project qualifies for federal tax credits, it qualifies for state tax credits, and the abandoned building credit is something that all of the six structures, all, I'm sorry, five of the six structures that were, that are involved in this transaction qualify for, three of them, three of them are not qualified for historic tax credits. Three of them are. If you think about where the risk management, DEO offices, Downtown Development Office, that building and the next, the two buildings next to it are not historically significant. Then begin, the bu, the next building, which is the building that the technology advisory group will go in, that building, if it does qualify, and the next two to get to the building on the corner of Nine Avenue and Nance Plaza. Those two do qualify. As I said, federal tax credits have to be used within five years of issuance, and the property cannot be sold during that five-year period of time. Can't be sold to another entity. It can be leased, you can make revenue off of it, but you can't sell it. When that five-year period is over, then you're absolutely free to do whatever you need to do in order to sell the property, convey the property. Like I said earlier, this process is pretty straightforward if the owner of the property is a business that is subject to federal and state taxation. It's a pretty easy structure to do. It's a whole lot more complicated when it's like us, and the entity that owns the structure to begin with is not subject to property taxes. That's why we have to have, we've been talking about this for over a year now, there's essentially a straw man in the middle that takes steps in and plays of the city in order to make it eligible, and so the city can reap the benefits of that, of those tax, tax credits. So switching over to the next slide then, how do the tax credits work in this case? There's a diagram on the left that, that shows a fairly complicated structure, but I tried to explain it in the narrative on the right-hand side. Starts with the city, it'll start and it'll end with the City of Myrtle Beach. The city at all times retains ownership of the property. Fee simple, we have fee simple ownership, never relinquish that throughout the transaction. City's, city's role in this, though, the first step is to lease the property to the Nine Avenue owner LLC to function as the owner for tax purposes. And that LLC is specially structured so that it can take advantage of those tax credits that, that the project has. That LLC then leases the property for ninety-nine, for a lease that's ninety-nine years. Now, that being said, that lease is in your package, and you can see if you read the terms of that lease, that the city as the owner has the right to terminate, and the expectation is that you terminate that pop, that lease at the end of the five-year period when the tax, when the tax credits burn off. So you can't, you can't really do that beforehand unless there is some other act of default. But any time, but the, the expectation is that five years, as soon as the five-year timing is over, that the city basically says, we wish to terminate this lease agreement. You no longer get your dollar a year on the lease, but the project comes back and basically the whole structure collapses. Now, the Nine Avenue owner LLC includes basically at least two parties. The first party is the tax credit investors. Now that can be one party, it could be three parties, it could be more than one, but collectively, they own ninety-nine percent of the project. I think there's ninety-six percent that's federal, about three percent of it's state, but all together collectively, they own ninety-nine percent of it. Now again, the only, the only purpose, the only role of that, of those tax investors is to see the benefit of the tax credits and, from our perspective, to put, put cash into the deal. The other member, though, because they have no interest in managing the project, is another LLC, which in this case is, has been labeled the Ninth Avenue Manager LLC. This is a single owner LLC, that single owner is the DRC. They own the remaining one percent of the, of the, the, the man, the owner LLC, they own the, that additional one percent. So basically, that is the entity to whom the city would be leasing the property. Now what also happens then is that there is a sublease. And the sublease runs between, again, the Ninth Avenue Owner LLC and the City of Myrtle Beach. So, again, I realize it's a very complicated structure, but this is a structure that's necessary to give you the advantage of those tax credits, and to also make sure that the end of the day, it's actually the City of Myrtle Beach and the city council that has complete control over all the policies and all the things that you, all the decisions that need to be made with respect to this project. So you all will decide the lease rates, you will decide the tenant mix. We've talked about issuing an RFP, that's what, if this project goes forward, that's what we plan to do. Right now, we've received at least twenty, before the RFP's gone out, we've received over twenty requests from people that want to get that RFP because they're interested in taking down some of the property. Assuming we get more than, more responses to the RFPs than we get, than we have space, it will be the council that will make the decision on which one of those bids to accept and which ones to reject. So this will not be done by a manager LLC or anyone else, it will be done, staff will make a recommendation to council, just like we do every day, and council will decide what that tenant mix is, then you will decide what the lease rate should be. So it's not up to anybody but this group I'm sitting in front of today. So let's talk about what the role of DRC is, because I realize that that's a sensitive topic. Again, the DRC is the sole member of the Ninth Avenue LLC, this is one, which is a one percent owner of the Ninth Avenue Owner LLC. And their only function is property management, which they will accomplish through a sublease to the city, and the record keeping that goes along with being the, the property manager. Again, that will be accomplished actually through that. Now since last July, all of the previous board members, with the exception of me, have given place from the board of the DRC. DRC at this point consists of, the board consists of me, it consists of Mike Shelton, the CFO Emeritus, and Foxon as Deputy City Manager. This is not an uncommon situation in which there is an LLC that exists only, only as a financing vehicle. The structure that we're sitting in today was also, was actually accomplished by the Myrtle Beach Facilities Corporation. That's a corporation that, that the mayor is the chairman of, I'm a board member, and Mike Shelton is a board member. We meet once a year in January to elect officers, and that's, that's some of what that, what that group does. It exists as a financing vehicle, in this case, that is the only thing that the DRC is doing. It's not going to play any of its pre-June 2018 role. So, now, why the DRC? Well, first of all, it satisfies the legal requirements. It already exists. It certainly is an organization that was initially established by city council, and it works closely with council, but in every legal sense, it's a separate corporation. It is not, doesn't fall under the auspices of the city in the same way that the planning commission does. It's not an advisory board, but a separate corporation. So legally, it is distinct from the city. The board membership, where you have the city manager, CFO, Deputy City Manager, pretty much guarantees that the direction of board is going to align with the direction of city council. And then, at this point, the DRC still owns the existing assets, primarily the properties that, the three properties that were acquired for the purpose of building, building the theater. The existence of those properties on the books of the DRC provides some comfort to the, to the tax credit investors, and that comfort translates into a bigger infusion of capital into the, into the project. So again, this is a, this role of the DRC is absolutely limited to that of the financing vehicle. So if you could switch to the next, to the next slide, if you would please, as to funding We have a bid in hand now for a little bit less than a hundred eight, one million eight hundred seventy-two thousand dollars. The value of the tax credits is seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which I think is forty-three percent of the total project. That being said, it's important, Michelle reminded me this the other day, that million eight hundred seventy-two thousand dollars includes roughly seven hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs to buildings that are not eligible for historic tax credits. So basically, you've got a million one, I think it's a million one hundred thirty-two thousand dollars in construction costs for buildings that are eligible for those historic tax credits. And of that, of that is cost, seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars is available as that capital infusion into the project. As you all know, you don't get, you get that infusion of capital at certain points along the way, but I believe you get most, I believe you get most or all of it within a year. So there, it is necessary to have some construction funding. Of that, staff has made arrangements with the bank in order to provide that construction funding, so that piece of it's done. So net loan at, when those tax credits come back is roughly a million one. So that's what, that's what you're down to. During the five-year tax credit period, there are two buildings that can be sold immediately. Those are the two to the immediate left of the building, the Downtown Development Office and Risk Management Office. And the other three can be leased for that, during that five-year period, but they can't be sold because they're subject to the historic tax credits. Again, and I've beat this into the ground, but after the five-year period, all of the buildings can continue to be leased or sold to private sector owners. I think this is something that council will need to decide what your strategy is down the road. Initially, I was inclined to say, let's sell those two buildings as quickly as we can. I talked to a commercial real estate broker this week, and they said, well, think about whether or not you want to do that, or do you want to increase the value? Right now, you're going to be working against some fairly low comps on that property. Should you wait, give it a couple of years, let the comps come up because of the investment that you're making into downtown, and then sell the buildings. But again, that's a question that you're all going to have to make at some point down the road, but today's not the day that I'm going to ask you to make that decision. The proceeds of either the sale or the net proceeds of the lease, because there will be cer, certain expenses that the landlord traditionally, can be used to retire any of the remaining debt and carry the interest that's on the, the bank during that period of time. So, bottom line, what does that mean to our taxpayers? It means that the proposed funding plan does not require tax increases, does not further burden our city businesses, and it doesn't in any way impact the city's ability to deliver, deliver services throughout the city. If you remember from the presentation on the development framework, the one grand standard development framework, renovation and the reuse of the vacant buildings creates good activity, and good activity is the thing that pushes out bad activity. So this is, it has a direct connection to our efforts to provide a safer environment for our residents and our guests. Financially, the project increases property taxes to support the other projects that are in the tax increment financing district, and also medially to support county and school district units. It increases, depending on the mix of property, of properties and subtenants, it increases accommodations taxes, hospitality taxes, and business license fees, which can be applied to any city service across, across the community. It also increases property values throughout the district, and finally, it further encourages private redevelopment by the existing property owners. So, that's, that is the overall plan in fancy. Basically, you have flexibility down the road to meet the interest payments.
If the city owns the properties and leases them out for profit, are they not taxable properties?
Yes, they would.
Okay, so they would go on the tax.
They're not taxable properties.
But they would go on the tax rules immediately as soon as they're leased.
I believe that is the case.
That is true. And the money would go to, because the tip that we had talked about is only us participating, the school board and the county would get the money from the taxes on this problem.
That's correct.
Right now, they're getting nothing.
That is correct. That is correct. And we are getting nothing in, in tip on that. And what I asked you for today, it's up to you folks, I do not want you to feel rushed. If you're not comfortable with either of the items before you, that's fine, but I do need to have some direction on whether to accept those bids or not. The difference between the first item and the second item, the resolution, basically just takes what I just went over and folds it into the overall master plan. You started with a resolution on the master plan, in which you adopted the master plan and the implementation plan, came back and adopted and added to it the advanced master plan, and then the developmental framework. The idea is to keep all the things that we're doing in the down The idea is to keep all the things that we're doing in the downtown together in that one document. So I anticipate this will be something the next manager will have to decide to continue or not, that every time that we make a, this type of decision, that that will, that will be reflected in a further amendment to that resolution.
John, I have a question for either you or Michelle. This structure, which our turn, Will has looked at, and so has Bill Huster, this keeps the debt off of the city's balance. Is that correct?
The, the construction of those have to be in the LLC, because the LLC owner has to own the property. So that is the end.
You know, this was, this was, like I said, the first time out of the gate, not only for us, but also for Bond Counsel and for Rogers and Lewis, putting this sort of structure together. But this is exactly the same structure, once it's in place, that you'll need to consider down the road for the theater. Now, for the theater, just to kind of give you an idea, now, we're not quite at that point of finalizing this, though. You're going to have a project that's going to take about nine million dollars to build, but through the application of these tax credits, the net's going to be about four and a half, four and a half million. So, that's kind of what's, the reason why these tax credits are so, so important to this community, and why we've gone to the effort of trying to go this extra step, to take advantage of what is an absolutely legal mechanism, but it is a complex mechanism.
And we do have a tax credit investor in place.
Yes.
And is the bank going to continue to honor the interest rate that they gave us of 1.4%?
We had some conversation with them last week, and I do believe 1.4 is where we are at this point. Thank you.
John, let me, I think there was some concern about the technicality, the mechanics of the process. I think you explained that well. And again, my comfort level is, is workable there. Just broadly speaking, my concern is the post-COVID can, post-COVID retail and commercial real estate lay of the land. In other words, will there be a demand for retail and commercial space? And of course, nobody can really answer that. So the question for Council is, do you wish to make that investment now, betting on better times ahead? And that's honestly what I'm struggling with right now. You guys are on the soul of caution. So, from a technical standpoint, I'm comfortable, I'm just trying to get in my heart whether or not the timing is correct. That's all really I have to say.
I know there's some, still some questions about this. I'm, I'm comfortable with these, Dr. Rinder. I am betting on some better times ahead. I'm hoping for some better times ahead. I know the FDA approved Pfizer's vaccine for emergency use. Hopefully, the rollout will go smoothly and we'll see some normalization coming up this summer, I'm hoping. So, just, I'm, I'm comfortable with this today and proceeding.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance? Well, we're going to have to say.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2020-57?
Is that moving?
Is there a second?
A second discussion.
Okay. Any discussion from Council?
Yes, ma'am. A few things, and I'm, I'm as much for downtown as anybody, and I know we all are. So I've got several questions, if you can indulge me for a couple of minutes, maybe three. I don't know, I'm not familiar with all the bid processes yet. I guess my first question is, why does Mashburn know that they're five hundred thousand dollars light on their bid? Because to me, we lost a strategic advantage there. I, I don't know if all the bids are released as soon as we get them, or how they know they're light by five hundred grand on their bid. That's, that's my first question.
I'm not sure. Bids would have been prioritized, conceived, open in our public.
Okay. All right, I wasn't aware of that. So that answers that question. Interest cost per year is how much? I didn't see that in the presentation.
Well, you've got 1.4% on what will be, after the first year, let's say a million one. So that should be something, something like sixteen thousand dollars a year.
How much?
Sixteen.
Sixteen K a year.
Round, I, round, so it could be on that thousand dollars.
Michelle, the last, next to last, off the question slide, but impact on taxpayers. I understand that the attempt and the reasoning is to, is to sell us on the project. I need someone to play devil's advocate, just so I can understand both sides. I understand the interest side, I get that, but impact on our taxpayers slide shows me nothing but positives, and I need to know the downside. However, ugly or not ugly that might be, that slide doesn't show us anything about what the downside is. There has to be a downside.
No, it's, it's hard to find a downside in a project where you can get seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in private infusion of capital. It helps you do a proper project, which is what you always look for in any sort of development. Are there always possibilities out there? You can't find someone to lease the property. We can't sell the property. We have to, you know, fund that through one of these other sources that we've talked about before with parking revenue or hospitality rates tax or something like that. That's always a possibility. But I don't know that I can honestly give you a downside. Trust me, if there's anybody who can find that, be cautious, it's going to be me.
Okay. On Tuesday, I thought, and I did for your presentation with me, and I should have thought to, that's my fault. I thought that the, the cost was flipped. I thought that they were the million and we were the eight hundred thousand, but now on, on here, on this presentation that we're just getting for today, it's remerged.
Yes, yes, you're right. That was, that was near, I was told it was a million eight dollars at the time that I put together in the summary, but my understanding is that that was corrected on the 14th Tuesday.
Okay, and last, last two things. One, so has, has Mashburn given any indication whatsoever, whether it's a private conversation or obviously not public, as we even know it, of how much more that 1.8 would increase? Is that it's not?
To do, to do that, they would have to, no, they have not, in private conversation. You know, I'm not even sure that they know at this point. They just, the purpose of the call, that the mayor and I both ended up all together, was just to let us know that they would not be able to extend, extend the bids. And like I said, the bids ran out at 11:59 AM last night. They did agree to extend it to Monday.
And I guess my final, my final statement will be, I agree with Greg about the optimism, and I agree with Dr. Rinder about the, I don't want to say pessimism, because that's not realism.
Soul of caution.
Soul.
Concern.
Concern. I do think we're going to have an up year in terms of business in 2021, but just doing a quick Google search last night and this morning, in the past 10 minutes, everything I'm reading and everything I'm hearing about commercial construction, not about business per se, business I've heard it is going to be on the upswing in 2021. The vaccine is causing optimism, commercial construction outlook is optimistic, however, I've heard commercial construction in terms of actually happening this year and predicted for next year, and most sectors could be down. So that feels me to believe why is cost going down. I know materials are up right now, but if commercial construction is soft, to me, that would make labor soft. That's why I'm trying, I understand, I didn't realize that Mashburn had already extended, and I wish we'd had that brought to us a lot sooner than today. Besides, it's a, but I also see your concern. I'm, I'm in a messy triangle in my brain, because I see your point, and I see your point, and I see your point.
If, if I could, Mr. Crush, I think there's a natural tendency to think about this in strictly business terms. But I think the takeaway from the developmental framework, what you're trying to do here is to change the nature of an entire section of our city. And good thing there, the thing that you want, I'd say prioritized over financial return is activity. So you have the ability, Council has the ability to set that, those lease rates at whatever you want them to be, and that rate can be below market, below market if you'd like to, in order to make that activity happen. Because that's the thing, again, from that report, that drives out the bad activity that you don't want. So the thing that we want there, we want people going into the shops, or offices, or restaurants, or salons, or boutiques, or whatever they are. It's, it doesn't mean that, you know, the, you have some, a lot of flexibility within the zone, even, you can even convert them to residential uses. So we're not locked into a certain type of use in that area, but you have control, Council has control over what the rates are, and you can set them to the point where you can pretty much guarantee that you're going to get some folks in there. And that's the thing, at the end of the day, that you really need to have in the areas, we need to have people that are going to work every day and reporting in that area or reasons for people to go there. That helps to drive out some of the negative things that, that, you know, we've all been confronted with and that we all want to deal with.
And John, you're telling me you can't really equate this to a product business deal and the return on investment they go to pay?
And to be, to be clear, I'm not concerned, I, I just don't want to, I don't want to lose. And I know that long-term, obviously, obviously this is a win, but taking some of the soul of concern, you know, I, I'm not concerned about making money off this deal. That's not, not my goal here. My goal is to make the area better. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not going too fast.
And that's where, that's kind of where I'm at now, now that you're saying about the bad element that, I was looking at this, and y'all have heard me say this before, these properties have sit there for years and years, and, you know, for whatever the reason, past property owners, they couldn't make the work up, didn't want to spend the money and invest in it, and we've got a chance. I understand a whole lot better today than I did last Tuesday. I did not understand exactly. I hear, I hear what you're saying, that if we've got investors out there ready to put money in, and we've got a low bid, the interest rate is low, and, but the biggest thing is, we've got a chance to, to fix up an area of our city that has been needing a whole lot of attention for years and years. And if that means us buying, if that mean me go to buy the property, I mean, to approve this, so we can move forward with that, I'm at that point where I'm ready to move forward with it, because I think if we miss this opportunity and don't do it, we're going to be back here next year. And we're going to have the same thing, same thing sit here, that we're going to have those properties that we told the public that we were going to do something down there when we bought it, and now we just, I don't want to say afraid to pull the trigger, but I'm ready to pull the trigger. Elections have consequences, and maybe I might not get reelected the next time, but I ain't going to worry about that. I'm just worried about doing the right thing right now, that I feel is right, so.
You know, Mike, to hear your point, this is a scenario where you can do this incrementally. We had the theater property, which I voted against, that's a purchase. You have the 7.1 million dollar infrastructure with the underground utilities and sewer pipes we need replacing after 80 years. I voted for that. So, the beauty of a plan like this is you can have, if you're excited about this, lay vote for it. If you're not, vote against it. But it really is important that the seven of us listen to one another and professionals and come to a, come to a decision. And as Mike was saying, if the elections do go down, we'll have, we'll have a problem.
Let me, we need to start off by saying that I've never taken a vote or been part of a vote where I was concerned about whether I was going to get reelected or not. That never plays into any vote that I've ever taken in the last 11 years. And how I feel about this today has nothing to do with reelection. But there are some concerns that I do have that I expressed on Tuesday, and those concerns have not been changed today. Mr. Peterson, understand, I understand the process. I understand, I understand how it's worked. And fortunately, I got some schooling on this last month, uh, Tuesday, actually, last Saturday, as to how this actually works. And so the process itself, I understand completely. How all this comes about, I understand completely. However, there are some questions that I asked on Tuesday that could not be answered. And as a matter of fact, according to our Bond Counsel, there was some question about how that could be done. And, and so, and there's a couple of other questions that, that I had during that meeting. So I'm going to ask these questions again today, and please understand, it has nothing to do with being obstructive. It, I just want to have clear in my mind two or three things. One, I understand that the DRC exists. I understand what this diagram shows. But two questions about the DRC. One, two of the current members may or may, may not be here after December 31st, number one. Number two, to say that the DRC is separate from the city is not necessarily true, because there's a bridge there. And the bridge is, even though the DRC may separate the cities, all of the DRC financing, funding come from the city of our city. So, you, you can't spend that by saying that they are separate and alone and the, and the city's not part of that. And that was, that was, that was one of the questions I asked. And Bond Attorney even said that that may be the case, that you can't, there is not necessarily separated. And the other question was, and in that same thing, was that, uh, Bond Counsel talked about, there was question whether the DRC could actually do this or not. So, I don't think we have an answer to that one yet. So, and, and I, I think, I'm not the only one who heard the Bond Counsel say that, that there's that question that needed to be, that needed to be answered, and resolved, and they were working through it, along with several other issues that had to be worked through. So, so that's my, my point about DRC. The other thing, the Ninth Avenue North Owners LLC, the question that I have, or concern that I have there, is that, Mr. Peterson, you're the registered agent of that, of that LLC. You won't be. You won't be more than likely a part of the city as far as its operation of the city after December thirty-first. So then that, then that brings the question again about how the LLC is gonna work. And I don't claim to know a lot about LLCs. I'll be the first one to admit that. But I have been involved in two or three, actually four LLCs. And each LLC that I've been involved in, there've been principals. And there've been principals on, listed on the LLC itself. And who those principals are. Like now, we don't have any principals. But I'll just leave that one where it's at. Get an answer, right? If you don't, okay.
I can give you an answer to that one today. It's not my expectation to continue to serve, um, on that board. I think my successor will be, uh, succeed in that capacity. And I believe Michelle will succeed in Michael's capacity. You, I think you want to, um, always have those board members be city employees. As far as the corporation goes, you are, you're correct, there has been that bridge there. It's always been there. But legally, they are separate corporations. So, but, and that's, that's what council is, is, is legally, they are separately formed from the city of Myrtle Beach, and they're not under your auspices. Even though the city has chosen to fund them, um, they're not legally, um, a constituent part of the, the organization.
I think, I think that would be a question to go around to Mayor and get an answer.
Sure.
Uh, I'm just not satisfied personally. I'm just not satisfied that is, I understand what it says about the legal. And technically, what I mean by that, if the DRC were to be in place, the DRC would have its own funding mechanism and everything else. Okay. But it is like it is. You can't just say that there's not a bridge there. And I think that's a question I would like to have answered. Okay, getting past all of that. Now, uh, I, like Mr. Crutch, was surprised when I read this, that it went from a flip flop on, on the, on the, on the money part. But it is what it is. Now, moving forward, if this is, more likely, it will be passed today. But if it is passed, first reading and it gets second reading. My question did become, first of all, I've never heard about who any investors are. And I, I've never, I made that clear from the dive on the number of cases. So as of today, yes. I don't know anybody else that knows who investors are, but I don't. And so I, you know, I think that's important. If you're gonna make a decision about things, that you know who the people are that you're talking about, that you're gonna be dealing with, having heard who those are.
Mike, can I address that before you go to the next question? I did show you a list of private investors.
Pardon?
I also showed you a list of private investors who have already made those investments. Tax credit investors, we won't know who these people are. And I'm gonna give you an example of this. And it's, it's hard for people to understand what a tax credit investor is. Five years ago, my CPA came to me and said, I needed to become a tax credit investor. You purchase those tax credits. I'm not a tax credit investor in the city of Myrtle Beach. We don't know what those projects are. I'm a tax, I purchase tax credits, state and federal. I don't know what that money goes to. I don't know what projects they go to.
That, that I'll understand. I, I, I think I have a pretty good idea about what tax credit investors are, okay? My point is, we're getting ready to, uh, sign a dotted line, so to speak, on a, a project for almost two million dollars. And understanding that I get tax credit, but at the end of the day, we are still on the hook for over a million dollars. And so to me, for me to have a comfort level, I'd just like to know who those investors are. A, B, what is the actual tax credit that would come to by way of the investor to the city, or however that does it? How does that work for the next five years? As to how we pay back from the tax credit, from the investor? As to how we pay back that loan over the next five years? Now, understanding that, um, sixteen thousand dollars a year interest, but that's just interest only, correct?
Right.
So then there's still the principal there, and at some point, time has to be paid. And I, I realize five years down the road, this, this, but five years come pretty quick. And the other part of it, I just would like to know, what is the plan other than possible sale or lease, if in fact, neither two of them would take place? There's always gotta be a backup plan when it comes to this. And we're already using parking meter money to help pay the seven, seven million project we got going in there now. So to say that, help me understand how the, the, the investors are not borrowing the money, correct? We are, correct?
That's right. We have to call tax credit.
At the end of the day, it makes no difference who is paying going forward. The city of Myrtle Beach is borrowing one point eight something million dollars, correct?
From the bank.
Huh?
From the bank, not from the tax credit partners.
Right, from the bank, we are.
Yes, sir.
So. So there again, to, all, all I'm saying there is to say that there is viability to the city with that. Because of the fact that we are signing another, right?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna lay that point clear. Uh, let me tell you, gentlemen, ladies, I support the whole plan overall. But we have to understand and realize that finances for the city of Myrtle Beach is, is a struggle this past year. And it may very well be a struggle going into twenty-one and even possibly into twenty-two. So that's why I get so concerned about where we're going to spend money and how it's going to be spent.
So, Mr. Lauer, um, and I apologize for this because I didn't reach back out to you. At the December first workshop, I know you had some reasons why you couldn't be there that day. Um, I did present to council, um, a funding plan for downtown projects. And I think we identified fifteen different funding sources, Michelle, that were available, none of which were property taxes, business licenses, or other things that impacted the, uh, general fund. And those, and I'll be glad to go, go back and make that same presentation, which I made to council that day. But basically, that package, if council, um, were to adopt that as a basis for a funding plan, allows you to move forward with all the projects that you've got currently on your to-do list without any tax increases, without any effect on businesses, without any of the negative repercussions. The only thing that you can really point to there is that the taxes coming in to the TIP won't otherwise be available, you know, to, for services. The, the reality of that is, you don't have that growth without the TIP. So you, and you can look in terms of Broadway at the Beach or the airbase, where that initial investment in the TIP has more than, has been a tremendous return on that investment. That's the same thing that we got here. But that package has been presented to you. What it describes is there's fifteen different funding sources that are available, none of which impact the general fund. And that, um, are more than sufficient to do all the projects that you've currently got on your plans. This one, um, the library, children's museum, the school, the theater, and sufficient to do all of this without having to have, place any burden on our taxpayers.
Okay, just one last thing I'll say, Michelle, you're talking, and I, I don't know, I don't believe we could use a tax or hospital to pay any of this, what we're talking about today. I don't think it qualifies, I don't know, it's not tourist related.
And this doesn't specifically suggest that. This basically means that if you put, for instance, a restaurant, if you have a pizza restaurant that goes into one of those, that will generate those revenues that can then go to support police activities throughout town.
But I'm, I saw it painted with this right here. That's what I'm referring to.
This basically, the, this is predicated on the belief that the five buildings that you've got available to sell, that you can sell them for at least a million one five each year. Okay. Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I do have a question. So, you, we voted today just to, um, accept Mashburn as the builder. How long until we have to start building, execute it? What, what's the timeline there?
They'll begin started, um, toward the end of January, given, given where.
So very quickly, really?
Yes, ma'am. And the athletic projected completion date is the end of September of the year. So that, that's what we're looking at. Again, I'm not trying to rush you on this, you know, questions on the structure. If you want bond counsel there, I don't take any exception to that. The thing I need today is direction on accepting the bid.
See, I, I, I had questions also, um, with how it was set up and everything. And from the questions we answered, or Mike brought to the attention last week, that were not answered. Um, you know, try to do things just as clean as you can the first time. You know? And for us to rush and do this, and I'm not on board this, do not get me wrong. But for us to go ahead and execute this without everything kind of being ironed out, I, I kinda have some problems with. But I understand the deadline with Mashburn and everything. And I, I've read the same things as far as commercial, commercial, uh, the building and everything, it's probably gonna decline a little bit next year and upcoming year. So right now, I would not be comfortable with voting, voting yes on this.
And that's fine. You, you, you know, I don't really even want you to prove it if you're not comfortable with it. The thing I need to get done is whether or not we accept one.
And John, the part about knowing who the investors are, I thought about that too, when Mike brought it up the other day. But then I thought about it more since Tuesday and thought about it the other morning. And to me, it, it doesn't matter. You know, if, if, if the money is, is coming, it's the same thing, to me, I'll, not quite the same, but I'll equate it in terms of mindset to bonds. I don't know who's investing in our city. Every time a bond issue is done, what I care about is the money comes to the bank.
And that, actually, that is exactly the right analogy. Because we don't know who the tax credit investors are. These are syndicated. So there's.
It's sold on market.
T D, what was the name of the?
T C M.
T C M. They come in and they have a company. And they market up a little bit, and then they sell it, you know, to individuals. We have no idea who the individual investors are gonna be, these are. Just exactly the same way you just described with bonds. Bonds are purchased, you know, we don't know who the individual investors are. Bonds are purchased by a bank, the bank sells them to retail customers. Same thing happens here. And it's, you know, we don't, we don't know who the customer, who, who will hold the tax credit. And that, the reason for that is, is just.
It's just the question of marketing. And, and in regards to LLC, you know, for, for years, prior to when I was on council, what came out of council all the time, ever, everywhere, that I remember, was that the corporation LLC of DRC, the city is not them, the city is not them. And I've always understood that the city had the control, so to speak, over that LLC. But having been involved in two or three LLCs myself, I also understand the purpose of an LLC is to provide that legal separation. That's, that's the, that's the basis of an LLC. An LLC is the newest form of corporation and tax structure out of any of them. It hasn't been around that many years regarding, compared to other corporate tax structures. Is, the purpose solely is to provide that legal separation. So if we have an LLC, that is Myrtle Beach Lawnmower LLC, just as a easy, and that is a legal structure that is separate. So while I understand, yes, the city does have a bridge, so to speak, but on paper, in the legal world, paper is what matters in terms of taxes. They are not one of the same. But I also see your point, there is a bridge, of course. There always has been a bridge, ever since the beginning.
I do wanna point out, John, correct me if I'm wrong, you or Michelle, to Jackie's point about the timing. The tax credit investors, the, the project has to be completed by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, in order to get the, uh, tax credits. If not, they lose their, their investment. Is there any discussion for the public?
Let me just point out that we can, this is a two reading thing. We can pass first reading and hold off until we're comfortable on second reading. And then only have one reading left.
Thank you. Okay, just to reiterate, we have a motion from Mr. Smith, a second from Mr. Chestnut, to approve the first reading, the ordinance, two thousand and twenty fifty-seven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution two thousand and twenty dash fifty-three.
Resolution two thousand and twenty dash fifty-three, to amend resolution two thousand and twenty dash forty-eight, adopting a related series of documents from what we know as the overall downtown master plan to adopt the funding plan for renovation of city-owned buildings on Ninth Avenue North and to direct the city manager to accept bids for this project and to execute such documents as are necessary to begin construction of the project.
Peterson, did you wanna add anything to that? Okay, is there a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty dash fifty-three?
Have I, have I?
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Chestnut. Any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All those in favor?
Aye.
Break your hand. All those opposed? Show of hands. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Bryant, I know you requested executive session, but we are already behind on our schedule.
I understand.
Um, so if we could do that at another time, I would appreciate it.
Will do.
Um, at this time, I'll ask if there is a motion to adjourn.